I hope you missed that.
The projects.
For that, yeah.
I didn't want to. Okay. I'll call the special meeting of the town of Rochester Town Board to order. By allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deputy Town Clerk, if you will, please.
Councilman Coleman. Councilwoman and Alan here, Councilman Paddock.
Okay, so we have a forum. Councilman Coleman and Paddock were called away for work today and unable to be here. We have one item on the agenda. Actually, two items. First is the Town Board accepts the agenda as prepared by the supervisor.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call us? This is a discussion on the approved economic enterprise overlay parcel owned by Great Blue Heron Properties. It's at twenty-nine nineteen and twenty-nine twenty-one, who was turned by. Two properties have been merged, right? Okay, so the SBL is seventy-seven point one dash two dash forty-two point one three one. So it's a dash one three one. This EEO was approved for those two properties, which are now one, on October fourth, two thousand and eighteen by the Town Board. We have a request to the, ordered to us by the code enforcement officer for an amendment to add an additional use on that property under the EEO. The code enforcement officer has determined that it is a new use, not a modification of the existing use. So as the code states that this must come back first with the Town Board for review of this. We've received the application. We've received the part one of the seeker. And we do have a site plan that I could share with you. Is it possible to get another copy or two of this? I know you kind of just did it by hand. We don't have the capability of photocapping something this size, unfortunately. We could do it, but it's gonna cost you more money for us to go staples and get a copy. Yeah, if you guys could get us two more copies.
Physical copy, not.
Yeah. Um, it, yeah, it does need to be physical because I have to send it to the board, to the planning board and the county.
Can I take that one back?
Absolutely. I knew you were gonna ask that question. I'll hang on to it for tonight while we talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, your, your notation's around here, and this is fine at this level. Eventually, the planning board may need a more detailed view of it, but for this part of the process, this is fine. So I wanted to open it up for the board members to ask you any questions, and then if they think we have answered the questions we need to answer, we can do some revolutions tonight to get this next step moving forward, getting this potentially added. So either you have any questions, they. We have, or actually, why don't we start with you explaining what you're doing? We'll go from there, sorry.
Like, starting as like what the building is and how it's operating and then why I think this fits?
Yeah.
Good place to start.
Absolutely.
So we bought the building and it is all small businesses, local business. I own a wood shop. There's another small fabricator like Metalworker. There's a chiropractor who's been there for many years. There's been like other various like furniture builder style businesses in the, in the property, I think for decades. And then we did this EEO process to make it. The property's on six acres. The building picks up approximately one and a half-ish of it. The property's L-shaped with a longer piece that is usable. And then the L-shaped piece is mostly their floor zone and under, under telephone line. It means not that, not super useful, but everything. And the hope now is that there's a hobbyist who is trying to set up a bandsaw mill to cut lumber on the, at the end of the long section of the property.
They be occupying the building as well?
No, he doesn't, there's no utilities. It's this, it's actually like a portable mill that he wants to keep there. It's not a big, it's a one-man, it's one-man shop.
So it's the wood, the, the milling as well as the drying kilns, right?
Right, which are all solar kilns, no power. They're essentially like a greenhouse with a fan.
Oh, okay.
It's like a shed that they vary in length that are non-permanent. They all are forklift capable because he wants to be able to rotate based on the direction of the sun. A year ago, it's on. And then there's a solar panel that powers the fan and that provides the wood.
Um, you know, approximately the square footage that that whole, all those operations are gonna probably take up?
Approximately. Oh. Do some quick math.
You sort of drew an area here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that they're like four feet deep by, and they would vary in length from ten to fourteen feet long. I think. They're really, you know, they, they're not deeper than a forklift fork, right? Because you would lift them in and then they're approximately a foot or so longer than standard lumber.
Okay.
And twelve.
Also, they're not big.
No, no, they're small, they're intentionally small. It's like the, as I understand, it's like baking cookies. So you would put all of a certain thickness. If you had all three inches, it's gonna take five months to dry. And then you'd have another one that's thinner material that dries faster. It's intentionally smaller.
In reality, this area you drew is probably much larger than the area.
Of the kilns themselves?
Yeah.
Oh, so, oh, oh, mu- mu- many times. The kilns are like probably with interior, probably four foot deep, and then the length is. I'm just shooting forty feet.
Okay.
Fifty feet, I don't know, they're highly sure.
Okay.
They're small, they're like little, they're like little greenhouses.
Now, I know that the, the planning board, it doesn't involve us so much, but I'm certain the planning board will have a question about those. Sawmill, you have any sort of estimated?
Yeah, the machines are new and they have their decimal ratings on them. And for whatever it's worth, it's less than.
Okay.
It sounds like, um, like a, like a tractor. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how to describe the motor type. It's not like a, a whiny weary chainsaw.
Okay.
Butts through, you know? And then, and they're new, they're like brand new, there's only one, it's a brand new machine. And I thought that we submitted all their stuff.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't.
That's the meaning.
The schematics of it. Is that on there too? Maybe on this. Yeah, I've got all the, the kiln stuff.
Yeah, the kilns are.
There was a sheet on the kilns and then there was a sheet on the.
The kilns are home-built and the plans are from the major university that has figured out like the pitch of the roof and the optimal, this map that he's using as a, you know, guide. And then the machines themselves.
Um, any questions? Need to review?
I had a couple of questions. Okay, so, oh, I found. Okay, so we, um, you went through the EEO process before. And so this would be, we, we're like, it's adding a use to the special district. So people currently, the sawmill is not allowed in that district. So the neighboring park was our residential.
No.
Their AR three. Okay, yeah, so my question about the use itself is just like the impact on the neighborhood, I guess. Which would be, is he bringing, is the person or is the idea to bring in truckloads of wood and like the frequency?
Oh, um, yes, truckloads of wood. But I think that we could classify a truckload as like a pickup truck with wood. It's not like.
It's not a trailer.
Yeah.
Forty-eight foot. No, it's a single, it's a single operator. And as a gauge, I have a wood shop, there's a staff for, we probably have a big truck, maybe twice. I mean, as a gauge, and we're like a running full-time business, maybe, maybe twice.
And then he's gonna, or I'm sorry, the person will be loading up the kilns and then they, the sawyers will take a while. So it's not like every single kiln is going to go with.
Oh, no.
Lumber every single day.
Oh, yeah, no, not at all. It's very like, very slow.
Yeah.
This is like you, you cut it, it's, it's faster than leaving it in the sun.
Yeah.
You know, it's, um, no, you, I think you've put it in and then again, like the thickness varies.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's in there for many months at a time.
Right.
And I would assume much, I mean, I'd assume shorter in summer and winter.
Yeah. Okay, those are, yeah, my main concern was the impact of the new use. And it sounds like, yeah, that sounded small scale.
And it'll be a one-person operation business or a couple of people? Not, you're not, he's not gonna be bringing in a team of twenty employees.
No, there's not enough physical space, not what it is.
Okay.
I mean, he has friends that come. Or if it's heavy.
Sure.
You know, but it's not like.
It's not gonna be like he's running two ships.
No, no, he has a car, his friends drive sometimes, you know, maybe there's two cars.
There's plenty of parking.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, 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 it's a small, it's a small, in the mill itself is physically, it's not large, it's physically small. I mean, relative to sawmills, I guess.
The only thing I can think of, we would have to delineate what setback is from the property line and you would have.
So that should reflect that.
Yeah, I think.
Be small directions and it gets real soggy if you get, like, there's kind of like an obvious. And then, so as I understand this operation, that'll be like a drying section, which comes and goes. A section where wood is dropped and then picked up and milled and then it just sits, I mean, the milling process is.
You know, and I know you're the owner of the property and he would be attentive. Is, is there any consideration that you maybe sort of arbitrarily say that he would not wait in sawmill on Sundays or something?
Oh, totally, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Just in terms of the impact on the neighbors, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Something we could just.
Right.
If there's concern, we can consider that as a sort of a condition of the approval. And we probably would set some sort of hours of operation that he could exceed, but I, it sounds like working outside, he's not gonna be working at night, in the middle of the night.
Milling.
No. No, no, I think, and, and when it runs, it runs like twenty minutes. I mean, it's like you have to make a cut and then it's the whole movie and everything, it's, it's a really, it's not.
Minimal, it's not a, it's a one-man feeding. Log after log after log into a mill.
No, it's like he picks, picks the thing up, sets it down, makes the cut, gets the thing, you know, it's like a.
And once he fills up his kiln, he's gonna wait for more, more studies, so.
That's right.
Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, so if we're, if we think we have all the information, which I, I believe we do, firstly, if you two agree, the next step would be to, uh, for the board to move this to be, we would have to refer it to the county because it's a change in the zoning district. We have to refer it to the local planning board and to the county planning board from our. We are also required to hold a public hearing because it's, again, it's a change to a zoning district for use that's not currently allowed.
I have a quick technical question.
Sure.
And I don't know if it's, so like trying to, try, we've been trying to figure it out too. We've been reading all the EEOs and trying to like. I didn't know because the building was previously in AR three, I didn't know that and.
Well, it's still in AR three. So the, the underlying zoning district remains.
Does a sawmill not qualify on an AR, like a working farm?
Portable sawmill.
You're a temporary.
Temporary up to ninety days.
Aha.
And it's because this is gonna be a continual use.
I couldn't figure out how the ninety days, and I also couldn't figure out.
The ninety days is a deep-seated time-generated thing. I believe, I think that's where the ninety.
If it's a portable sawmill that's there all the time, it's not a temporary sawmill. So the temporary sawmill is just there operating for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why you're here.
Sure, sure, I, so the temporary is if you were gonna build something and you were gonna mill your own lumber.
I guess, I also was, couldn't figure out if we could just apply for nine, every ninety days, just to apply. Because it's not necessarily clear.
Well, there is a permanent sawmill use, but it's not.
It's not in that lab in that district.
It's in others, I think.
But the permanent sawmill is not the scope of what you're talking about. The permanent sawmill is like what, like what Warishlumber used to have, where they were milling all day.
Right.
Eight hours a day, five, it's five or six days a week.
Right.
Clearly, this is in between, but we still have to treat it because it's not a temporary.
Right.
Because it's gonna stay more than ninety days, we have to treat it as if it's a portable, per, excuse me, permanent sawmill. It shouldn't really, based on your description, I don't think it's, it's, uh, it's a huge issue. I think, my guess is it shouldn't have to process fairly quickly, but. We still, according to the attorney, because it's a change in use, we have to treat it as if it's a new use.
Sure.
Except the district is already. So all we're doing is, well, not all, the Town Board is reviewing, adding that use to the EEO district.
Oh, okay, great, and that, that change in addition sustains?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
So once it's added into the EEO for this particular property, it existed perfectly.
Great.
So if he decides, I don't wanna do this anymore, and another sawmill operator wants to come in, you have all your approval. It's, and it's just because like the other uses you're doing are allowed uses in that district. So that's why they were able to be slid in and grabbed by. So if two of you are comfortable, what I would do is, first motion is, we have, we have to deal with seeker.
Right.
Uh, so we would classify this as a, I'm trying to think, actually, it's a type one action, but we are, um, we have to, we have to send it for reviews to the local. Unless, let me look, let me look up one thing. Because it's only involving one property, this may be, it would be an unlisted action. Because it's a change of use that involves certain, uh, property. Okay, so type one actions. Oh, the adoption of changes in the law within any zone district, protecting twenty-five or more acres of the district. You're under twenty-five acres. The granting of a zoning change at the request of an applicant with action that needs to receive one or more of the thresholds even elsewhere in this list. You're not adding ten more units, or fifty more units of housing. Uh, you're not adding parking for five hundred vehicles a day. The structure is not exceeding a hundred feet above ground level. Any unlisted action that includes agricultural use currently or partially, that's still in the county act, right? That exceeds twenty-five percent, so twenty-five percent of twenty-five acres is, you said it's approximately six acres. How close to approximately six acres is it? That's under six point two five and that's twenty-five percent of twenty-five acres. Six point two five. So.
The property also is not impacted.
Oh, I mean, I mean, that may be right, because it actually just says six point three four. Any unlisted that includes a non-agricultural use currently or partially within the agricultural district, so this is a non-agricultural.
Yeah, yeah, and it's in.
Exceeds twenty-five percent of any threshold because you said point three four.
Okay.
And it's six point two five.
So that would make it.
Makes it a.
Okay.
Dang.
Well, it's not, it just means we have to refer.
We have to say one word. So with that.
Yeah.
We still have to set it for public hearing and all that, which we can do all those motions right now. And it will start the process, it just means we, we have to wait till either the planning board comes back to us or we have to wait thirty days. Ask them since they have a meeting on the, what's the, twelfth?
Yeah.
September.
Yeah.
So if we can get an answer back from that meeting, then we should be able to, shouldn't change anything. That's okay.
Have to change?
Understood, um, so I'd ask for a motion to tentatively set this as a type one action and authorize the supervisor to circulate intent to seek lead agency.
I'll make that motion, one second.
It's a roll call.
Councilman Coleman. Councilwoman and Alan.
Aye.
And Councilman Paddock. And Councilwoman Seago?
Aye.
And.
Okay, so we'll do that referral. Uh, second motion is to set this for public hearing. It's too late to do it for our September first meeting, but we could do it for a workshop meeting since we already have five public hearings for audit meeting.
Oh, on the twenty-ninth?
Uh, yeah, so I would, how about we do it at the workshop meeting, which is on the fourteen? Fourteen.
All right.
Oh, no, with the third.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Is that right?
Yes.
Right, there's five thirty. Yeah.
So, so set it for public hearing, be held at six thirty PM on the, at the Elbowwood Community Center. Uh, the topic would be addition of parcel. Seven seven. Seven seven point one dash two dash forty-two point one three one, uh, to add the use of sawmill in the EEO district for that parcel. And stumbling here, so. So the, uh, the public hearing to be set to be held at six thirty PM, September twenty-first, at the Elbowwood Community Center, and request Town Board to circulate.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next resolution is to refer this to the Ulster County Planning Board and the Town of Rochester Planning Board for comment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so you're all set? So the next, uh, I'll give this back to you. If, if you can scan it as well as make two copies, that would be great. Um, and then you can, because then we, we can send it digitally to the county planning board, but it will help to have the copies, so.
No problem. And where do I bring this back?
You can either bring it back to the Town Clerk's office or drop it off at my office. If I'm not there though, feel free to drop it off at their office and it'll get to me. And then you can just email me the digital copy of, of everything else I have digitally and I can share that with the, the other boards. So your public hearing will be on the twenty-first, um. We will have to send out notice to all the founding holders of this, of this project. And you'll be responsible for the cost of that mailing and the cost of the. It should be valuable. And, uh, then, if planning board doesn't wanna be lead agency, we can declare lead agency that night. We can go through seeker and.
That's my previous seeker, because if this previous doesn't count.
No, because it's a different use, the change from what the previous was. I actually thought about that, I was like, we already did seeker on this one, because this use wasn't part of that consideration. So we have to do a new seeker up.
Yeah.
But you filled out the part one already, that's all completed. We'll circulate that with the, with the notice of the intent. The county planning board. They mean on the seventh, so we, of September, so we should be able to get it to them for September seventh. The local planning board for September twelfth. So in theory, we'll have answers back from both of those who was for your public hearing.
Which would be great.
Which would be great.
And then the public hearing remains, I, I, I'm starting to get caught up.
Yep.
It's a thirty-day open and then.
Well, no, if we have all the information we need before your public hearing, we could potentially close it that night.
Oh, great.
Um, if we haven't gotten everything back from the county and the local planning board, then we would have to hold it open until thirty days has passed from the time we submit that to them. So actually, the quicker you get that map back to me.
It's gonna come back tomorrow.
Perfect. So, uh, it, it will get out on Monday then to, to the local boards. And they'll have thirty days from that date to respond.
Okay, so, and then from there?
Then if we approve it, then you go to the planning board for site plan review because you are amending your site plan. Uh, it would be exactly that, an amendment to your approved site plan. And unfortunately, that. Unfortunately, that has to also go through its own planning, uh, on its own public hearing.
Right.
But, um. It's. You know, I can't speak for them as to how quickly or slowly they will agree with us. I, my guess, guess is it should be. Um, any comments we're gonna get, I would assume we would get from the referral to them.
Sure.
So, uh, in theory, this, uh, you know, I would say by November. Possibly by October.
Okay.
Worst case, yeah, best case. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No problem, we appreciate you coming for the special meeting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, of course, totally, yeah, there's all these great people and the building's like a little. It's like the thing you've been trying to do.
It, it looks great, uh, love you, you have the sign change that you did.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Very artistic and I have, I checked with the code enforcement regularly to stop things like this and there have been zero. Concerns, complaints about any noise, anything.
No, everybody's very. Happy to be there.
Yeah.
And, um.
And apparently, you've been doing it now for almost four years, so.
Yeah, it's, it's nice, yeah, it's going well and people, it's, um. It's like a treat to be there, so it's like a nice little, it's all small business, which is like.
Exactly what this code, you, you were our first, actually, as of right now, you still are our only E E O, but we do have another one in the process. We have two more in the process.
Oh, that's great.
I think one is gonna be, but, um, anyways, but, uh.
Oh, I think it's a big deal, it's so nice, that building, the, the whole, it's made, it's all made to be doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel like we're, um. We're just like doing what it's, what it's built to do and it does really nice, like all the people, it's almost all creative business, so it's nice.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Um, I'll bring you back tomorrow.
Yeah, perfect, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so mu- so much. Okay, uh, so I'd ask for a motion to close the special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?